A pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for its stand, on a nation, on a job, in the visible, real, true, world.
Roll call, Mr. Bate?
Here.
Mr. Anjanopoulos?
Here.
Mr. Delacquilla?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Mr. Ferrendino?
Here.
Ms. Keith?
Here.
Mr. Pizzou? Dr. Scardino?
Here.
Ms. Stella?
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Pizzou?
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Notice was sent to the record, the township clerk, posted in a lobby at town hall, in the board office, and on the district website. Setting forthcoming public meeting of the board. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 30th meeting. The Williams Board of Education, and I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving.
There you go.
I'm just gonna read off a quick, um, report from the middle school for November, things that went on, that were sent to us. Mrs. Muley's class created recycled monsters and shared them with petals in Michigan. Thousand LMS students designed over 200 cards that were distributed to residents of the New Jersey Veterans Home in Paramus on our Veterans Day. Ms. Lambert received a grant of $500 from the Association of American Educators to purchase a document camera. Community collaborators and NJHS students participated in Town Clean Up Day. Students and staff enjoyed the first multicultural Thanksgiving feast with staples cooked and served by macho and tasty dishes and desserts made and provided by our LMS families, and apple pie baked by our very own student chefs in taste around the world. Community collaborators created Thanksgiving place mats and turkey magnets for the seniors enjoying the town sponsored feast at LMS. LMS staff engaged in the team building activity in our November articulation meeting, where departments competed to build tallest pre-standing tower. Student council sold gratitude lollipops as both a fundraiser and a small inducing initiative. To celebrate chicken soup with the salve, Miss Vasquez's students during work time learned how to support those around them and created conflict cards. Ms. Muley's earned, Ms. Muley earned a significant amount of money by applying for an award for the best families and schools together grant from the NJEA. The LMS mentor program is in full swing, with 21 students paired and supportive adults in the building. Man Club's students depart and try the hardest man fall in the contest, constantly by spastic. Congratulations to our very deserving LMS GE OY Teacher of the Year, Melissa Muley, and ESP Educational Service Professional, Samantha Schenau. Congratulations to them. Mrs. Howard, Ms. Ashrow, and their student volunteers have been working hard on many of the set pieces for the upcoming performance of The Midnight Summer Dream, directed by Mr. Arcoche and assistant directed by Mrs. Anjanopoulos. The play is set for Thursday, December 9th, and Friday, December 10th. So get your tickets, all on the website at the link. And those are all the things that happened from the round, so thank you. And with that, I want to turn it over to the superintendent to report.
Thank you.
I heard what that was. I can hear it talk, and I'll part turn you over.
Thank you. Did you hear?
Yeah.
That doesn't sound like it. Okay. I wanted to first start with the COVID update. Currently, the district has 55 positive cases since the beginning of the school year. That breaks down to 45 students and 10 faculty. So we've had pretty good, um, success with our man being in the buildings, and we feel that our rates are relatively low, so we're really happy about that. So again, that's 55 total positive cases since the start of the school year with 45 students and 10 faculty. I am required, um, weekly to report every Tuesday morning to State of New Jersey. Our COVID rates, also our attendance rates for that day, they get snapshot each Tuesday, and I report that out to them. Uh, the district also last week submitted our ARP-ESR grant. Um, we got a 2.6 million dollars, and I'll just go through some of the highlights. Um, we planned to, um, air commission the second floor of the high school. Um, we planned to, um, put in a boiler at Columbus School. We, um, we're adding staffing in some areas, um, as well as we're adding curriculum updates. Um, we look to, we look to expand our math, um, initiative of, of grades three to five. We're looking to expand our readers workshop at the elementary levels. We're going to be purchasing level libraries for those classrooms. We are also, um, we've also are bringing in consultants, um, in order to roll out that math curriculum as well as the, uh, the language arts. Uh, part of the grant also includes, um, summer learning enrichment activities, so we're gonna be planning a summer program for this coming summer. We're also looking to do a Kita Five After School program, and we're trying to put together a H school as a test prep course that we're gonna obviously offer to our high school students. There's also 45,000 in mental health services, and we're looking to bring, uh, services into our mental school, um, to add to our, our guidance team here. We currently have two guidance counselors, so we're looking to add to support that, including a large student body here in the middle school.
Hear that?
So that's just a brief overview of, of that grant submission, and, um, so, you know, we have to start, you know, building the resources to, um, and spend that money. We're looking to bring in HVAC consultant and a boiler company to get the quotes going on there. We've already started with the curriculum update. So that's the little review of the ARP-ESR that was due November 30th and was submitted. The middle school is being highlighted. Um, last school year, we reported a new science curriculum amplified, and they've come out and they've fled toward the middle school, and obviously it's extremely impressive. So they're looking to showcase the middle school in their curriculum series, so that's really exciting. So our, our middle school, um, administration is working to get to conduct that photo shoot. So as soon as we have some photos and pictures, I'll be happy to share it with the community when that happens. I'm also extremely excited to, to say and announce that our referendum is basically complete. We have, um, Columbus School's the last building that we're finishing, so we have just had the furniture delivered into that building. And, um, you know, we're excited that all the facilities are gonna be up and running. And, um, there's really only one little outstanding issue that we're trying to work on. And, um, I've got a few complaints from, from, from the school, but also the township, that the basketball hoops in, in, in those multi-purpose rooms aren't able to be higher than lower. So we're looking to, um, bring in a company to make that possible. So, um, overall, the referendum went really well. We did add some projects, and notice that Franklin School, we added, um, a wall that, that comes down front avenue, um, that was partially compromised, as well as some other things. So that finishes the referendum project. And finally, um, one of our basement teachers, Tim Delmont, was recognized as the 2021 exemplary educator of, uh, we received one of the important scholarships throughout the state. So I'll go into his fight and to a subsequent need to be recognized. And that end plan. Thank you.
Stay on every board?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'll be brief. First, I hope everybody had a, a happy, very happy Thanksgiving day. I reviewed the agenda, uh, and discussed it with the superintendent and members of the board, and I, um, I support all the, um, recommendations of the superintendent. Uh, in addition, um, I can certify that we have sufficient funds, um, for the remainder of, uh, for the remainder of the year, that no account will be, um, in arrears. Secondly, the, um, dealing with the district CPA, uh, he's finalizing the audit. It's not finished yet. Uh, there's some, uh, financial information that he needs that has to be provided by the state, which is not forthcoming yet. I, I can say though, that, that fully anticipate, um, that we'll have, we're gonna have a year similar to last year, where we will have generate surplus that can, uh, be transferred to a capital reserve and capital, uh, uh, reserve accounts and our maintenance reserve accounts, so we can continue to address some of the repairs and, um, to our building. And finally, to the other audit, which was done, uh, done by the state, um, like the cold Monday, and he's given, uh, a report that, um, the audit is still under senior review. Um, until that's done, um, no, no report will be issued. And once again, once the report is, is issued, it will be distributed to the board and also made totally public. And lastly, with the, the, the district, we have started, uh, the procedure or the process of, uh, starting to formulate the budget for the following, uh, school year. Someone's on your board.
I want to make the, uh, report on the results of the election. Pardon me and thank you. I'd like to, I would like to announce the results of the annual school election. Uh, the county certified these results on November the 20th, and we welcome to the Board of Education for three-year terms, Mr. Paul Passamano Jr., who polled 2,716 votes. Dr. Anthony Scardino, who polled 2,279 votes. Mr. Daniel Parata polled 1,434 votes. And additionally, we have a one-year, we have one two-year unexpired term, which was won by Michael Carino with 2,161 votes. Congratulations to the four members who were elected to the board. Congratulations to everyone who participated in the election, and we welcome you to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations to those who were, uh, elected and then this morning, January, uh, reorganization meeting. Um, with the approval of minutes from, uh, Minutes Meeting Number 15, October 26th. Can I get a motion? Roll call.
Mr. Bate?
For?
Delacquilla?
For?
Mr. Ferrendino?
For?
Ms. Keith? Dr. Scardino?
For?
Ms. Stella?
For?
Mr. Anjanopoulos?
For.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing on agenda items on the, items on the agenda.
Hi, good evening. Um, so I have, um, a few things that I'd just forget to worry for me. Uh, my name's Michelle Miller. Um, so the, uh, American Rescue Plan, the, um, uh, could you expand on the evidence-based programs that you're planning to, um, uh, start up in the district? And who's providing them, who's vendors, what material are going to be used, um, what are the topics that you're gonna, um, you're seeking to achieve? You know, in, in terms of, uh?
This was EQ for case required. Then it's gotta be EQ for the middle school play. I wish every time you, oh, it's not the name.
Back to item number seven, under finance. And I remember, okay, this spring, you guys had, um, approved a vendor for, um, SEL, um, uh, development, and, uh, I was just looking to get the name of that consultant, and was that person part of this? Um, and expressed some concerns that this person didn't complete their education, and, um, they were, they were finishing up their programming, and simultaneously, they were gonna deliver, um, professional development to the staff. At the same time, you were gonna move forward with curriculum, because it was, uh, it's actually was extended to the end of the school year, the social science curriculum. And I was looking to get some a little bit more information on all of those topics I brought prior.
Okay. So I, I can share with you a presentation we did at the last board meeting.
Yeah, I missed that thing. So, and actually, here's another to expand on that, and on the, um, website part, or like review the, uh, agenda items, and the agenda's not posted since July on the website.
Uh, I'll double check, but I know, like, for instance, this afternoon, we posted the agenda for tonight's meeting, and we do either the day or the prior.
Right, yeah, that's why I, I love, because I know you guys are diligent, but this, I have to narrow it to you. I didn't see anything on the, on the school site since July. Yeah, or?
They're not archived, or not there.
Okay. I'll double check the agenda archives, and I can provide you those copies.
Yeah, along the line, once you're posted, I don't, I don't care, I can get myself.
Okay, no problem. I'll make sure that that's updated.
I know minutes take longer, so I'm not worried about that.
Okay. I will, um, I'll also provide the, uh, presentation that we did at the last board meeting, and then if you have questions, you know, you can, I'll, I'll email it to you if you have additional questions.
Okay, yeah.
Reach out, let it go over. The question is exactly what we did, what the mandates are, how we hold them out in the district.
Right.
Um, as well as some of the programs that were, that we're approving right now. We just approved the money and we built out the grant, so we're in the process of exploring. I know that we're gonna be having meetings, like, so, you know, for the summer program and some of the after-school programs, we are exploring whether we are gonna bring in, um, like a third-party vendor, uh, whether it be like Compass Learning, um, Study Island, one of those programs. So, so we're going through that process to see if we are gonna bring in a, a company like that, where we're gonna build out our own curriculum to roll out for those programs. So, um, whereas, you know, we've allocated the money and said that we're gonna be using it for, for after-school or summer programs, we have to determine what exactly those programs are gonna be, and we have some time to do so. I know last year, um, with, with the summer program, we decided to stay internal, and we had teachers work on curriculum maps, and, and that's the curriculum we use in the summer. So we're kinda just working, working that out, so it would be obviously one or the other. We're either gonna develop curriculum ourselves, and, um, I can have those maps for you, or we're gonna look to possibly bring out, um, bring in, you know, a vendor such as, you know, one of those.
Okay. So, when you talk about evidence-based programming, um, can you expand a little bit more on that about what, um, what do you, what do you, what do you, um, what do you mean by that? So, like, I, you know, so those words that can mean a lot of different things, so I'm looking for a little bit more clarification and expansion on that. So if you could enlighten me as to like what, what, are you talking about bringing up test scores, or these other topics? And apparently, they're backed by proven methods and materials, like things like that. That's what I'm looking to get some answers on.
I think, right, let's try this again. Now I can hear myself. Um, good evening, thank you. So a couple of ways to answer that, I'll give you brief, and then we can provide more detailed information that you can research, follow up on your own. So regarding the ARP-ESR federal fund, you are required, as part of our application, once it's approved, it will be public knowledge, and you can look at specifically some of the resources we provide. So part of the ARP-ESR requirement in developing the application is that you have to, uh, identify resources and provide that they have shown to be evidence-based to, I guess, effectuate the change that you want it to be, whether it's academic achievement, whether it's, um, social behavioral changes. And the, uh, the Department of Education provides, uh, resources and links that one can use to research, um, that you're required to provide. And it actually breaks it down into different types of tiers of what, what's the evidence. So if it's a tier one, it means it has shown to be strong evidence.
Sure.
Tier two and tier three. So the Department of Education has this information publicly.
Yes.
As uses a resource that we're supposed to follow. So part of the work that, um, when we developed this application was to also do, uh, research on what works clearinghouse, um, other, other outside places that looked for the research, that has showed that whatever this particular strategy, whether it's a program, or whatever the approach is, that has been proven to be effective. So that's some of the research we had to do on our end to show that, um, we had to provide as a requirement of doing this application. So, um, in the response and the follow-up, we can give you the resources and the links that we, that we utilized. Yes, that answers your question.
You know, I did review volume two of the American Rescue Plan, um, which focuses on education. They talk about, you know, the, um, uh, you know, the, um, nutrition, and then it goes into other topics. I, I clicked on every single one. Um, and I am aware that you have to spend 20% of the money, the funding that you get, on SEL education. A lot of people interpret that as very different things. Um, I'm gonna be honest, I have three kids, one in college, one in high school, and one in middle school. It's amazing how my middle schooler is the most affected by this whole pandemic. This is my college kid, who was graduating college at the time, her grandmother passed away in the first one COVID hit. My, my high schooler, she handled it pretty good, you know, but my son, I can't even begin to tell you. You know, I'm very aware of current issues. I'm an educator myself. You know, I dealt with a lot of, um, abuse with my children at home, being, you know, limited to being home. Um, yeah, I was calling UCR every, like, every week. And we have a very small program of 50 kids. So the scope that we're going in, the direction that we're going in, I hope, and I hope that the board here who's remaining and the new members that are behind me are very well aware of this part. Just because sometimes the government says it's a good idea, it's not always a good idea, because we know our kids best. The other side of it is that if we tackle these topics, that we have to do this in a very, very careful and, and, in a, uh, in a way that doesn't intrude in the home. I do not want school to raise my children. I want them to educate them, as I do my own students. We have to be very mindful of that, and I hope when you guys get this stuff to, you know, vote on it, that you ask more questions. It's not always that the superintendent's recommendation, because he is following the rules. That's a fact. But you are the elected board, a line that is between the community and those at the expert level at the state and federal government are mandating. I really implore you to, uh, uneducate yourself on the USDAO, and how it's only been in existence since 1980, for many good reasons. Why we didn't have United States Department of Education prior to that. I really would like for you to consider and be mindful of the community at large, and that really the focus should be on education ketchup. With the understanding of SEL could be, um, interpreted in many different ways, I'm gonna tell you, I was horrified by many of the links that are suggested by the USDAO, as well as State of New Jersey. Horrified. We are expecting children to synthesize and process these things that are truly designed at an educated, educational level, which is considered more, even post-Bacqueuret. You're talking like PhDs, um, you know, uh, law school, things like that, and it trickling down into our younger, younger kids. The State of New Jersey approved this for grades nine to 12, and then snuck in from a kindergarten, and they had kindergarten eighth grade. We really, really need to be very mindful and diligent a lot about what we're selecting, the message that we're giving, because I kinda find it really hard to believe that every student's gonna walk away processing things the same way. One of my complications a few years ago, we had one of the best, that I've ever been to in my almost 25 years of education, that when you work in the business world, you're allowed to interview and hire the best of the best. You're allowed to do that, and fire, and hire, and fire, and hire. But when you're in education, she equated to a box of blueberries. Some in the box are perfect, sweet, round, others are mushy, tart, almost getting spoiled, but we're not allowed to fire those students. So we have to be very mindful in how we process, I mean, how we present this information, how the students are gonna synthesize and process very complex things. On one of my college chores with my oldest daughter, I went to, um, actually state school, and as a parent, I was horrified by the norm situation. We're expecting kids who their entire life be told where to sit, what time to report to a different class, what they're expected to learn, and now we're sending them off and have pretty much free rein of living, and expect it to behave in a way that, quote-unquote, won't get you into trouble, or they're expulsion from school, arrested, or criminal charges being filed. Because we're like expecting 18-year-olds to walk into adulthood, understanding how to deal with all that. So again, I'm gonna be very, I'm gonna be asking a lot of questions. I'm, I'm, I'm all about working with people, I'm not trying to sit here and make national news here, but I really wanna be, um, diligent and help educate the elected board members, what, where we're going and the direction we're moving into. And that's really where I'm at right now. So I wanted, you know, just to put it out there. Okay? So I would really like to get that information and, and, um, read up on it, look at the links. I wanna know the vendors that you're hiring, I wanna see their perspectives, what their goals are, I wanna see if they're evidence-based, because I'll tell you, um, after this whole thing started rolling out, I personally received an email from Rutgers University about a new major, and it's about agent of change. So if we're doing this simultaneously, training people, as well as pushing it through the public schools, how is this evidence-based? And why should my kid be a kidney thing? When that, my, my son is just trying to, like, deal with going back to school, re, um, you know, going back into his community, um, having appropriate peer relationships, communication. I mean, that's really my focus as a parent. You know, everything else is like, be a good citizen, I think is pretty much just township. Um, but again, I really would like for, you know, to be, for everyone to be mindful now where we're going with this, and what we're expecting young minds to process very, very high-level topics, and how they're gonna walk away from that. And that's where I'm at. Thank you.
I just wanna add one thing as you walk away, um, just to clarify, and I do appreciate your comments, and I invite you. One of the requirements in the ARP-ESR application is that we continuously engage the community, um, and various stakeholders as we hold this out. We previously, um, a year or so ago, probably, we did a survey, and then we had a follow-up meeting. We're gonna be in the process of doing that again, so I welcome you and I invite you to be on the lookout when we have those meetings again, because that'll be another one before opportunity for you to be a part of those conversations.
Thank you.
Tracy, call on Corinne. Um, as she comes up, I just wanna go over the, so on the district website, on the Board of Education tab, the meeting agendas, they're all up there, up to date. The minutes, when you look at the meeting minutes, the last one up there is September 28th, and that's because tonight we approved October 26th, so October will go up.
I mean, I work on the top one, I, and it's not a hearing on top.
Okay.
And, that's actually, who's on the agenda, correct? Agenda for you?
I checked.
Basically, my question is about the agenda. When is the agenda supposed to be posted? I know that you have a post-meeting at least 48 hours in advance. When is the? When does the agenda need to get posted? Because I've emailed for the last four months the day of the Board of Ed meetings for the agenda.
So currently, there's no law that states when you have to post the agenda. We try to post it the day of. I typically try to post it, you know, by, by 3:00, 4:00 o'clock. Sometimes I try to even do it by 12:00 or 1:00. You know, this being last week was a short week. I think this afternoon, we posted like 3:30 or 4:00. I know there's something, Mr. Kee, to clarify, but I know there's something in the works that the state's trying to pass legislation that legally you have to post at 48 hours. But currently, there is no regulation of when. But like I said, we do always try to post it by 3:00, 4:00 o'clock that day.
Oh, so I could stop emailing Mr. Hayes and just wait until 3:00 or 4:00? Okay, thank you. No, I just wanted clarification on that. Because like I have been, you know, I mean, he knows. He saw it in August, saw it in September. I told her November.
We try to get it out as soon as we can, you do?
Okay, great, fantastic. No, I just took off the email from that one. So it's under 48 hours, but okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Prue, are you agenda or non-agenda?
Non-agenda.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. More discussion of formal agendas. We're gonna move on to agenda items. Finance, Ms. Kee.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policies, rules, and regulations, may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the expected actions. Hearing none, I make a motion for a separate motion.
Roque. Mr. Abate for Mr. Engenavos. For Mr. Dela Quillo. For Mr. Ferrendino. For Ms. Kee. Dr. Scardino. For Ms. Stella.
For.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Corin, Mr. Ferrendino.
Education and curriculum. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education and curriculum committee, may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the expected actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion. Separate motion.
Mr. Abate for Mr. Engenavos. For Mr. Dela Quillo. For Mr. Ferrendino. For Ms. Kee. Dr. Scardino. For Ms. Stella.
For.
Thank you. Policies, rules, and regs, Ms. Stella.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policies and rules and regulations, the committee may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the expected actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion for number one to four. Be adopted.
I would just also like to clarify one point to Ms. Stella.
On the last policy that we're approving, number four, we do have a correction that we're adding to the policy that we're approving. We talked about this in public work session, and that statement is added to the travel policy. And this is how the statement will read. The Lindhurst Board of Ed also recommends that PCR or rapid PCR test be conducted one to three days before the travel occurs. That's just an added statement that we discussed in a great upon an executive session. Work session, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So we have a motion for number one to four?
Yes, number one to four.
You need a second? Roque. Mr. Abate for Mr. Engenavos. For Mr. Dela Quillo. For Mr. Ferrendino. For Ms. Kee. Dr. Scardino. For Ms. Stella. Athletics and student activities, dominant, Mr. Abate.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of student activity, the committee may so indicate now and separate motion for each of the expected actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion for number one to six.
Yes.
And third page, Adam, be adopted.
That's item number one to eight, certainly on the agenda. Can I have a second? Roque. Mr. Abate. Mr. Engenavos. For Mr. Dela Quillo. For Mr. Ferrendino. For Ms. Kee. Dr. Scardino. For Ms. Stella. Thank you.
Our new business, Dr. Scardino.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of new business may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the expected action will be entertained.
This is gonna be every meeting?
Hearing none, I make a motion for the following new business actions for number one through eight. Be adopted.
Second.
Roque. Mr. Abate. Mr. Engenavos. For Mr. Dela Quillo. For Mr. Ferrendino. For Ms. Kee. For Dr. Scardino. For Ms. Stella. Thank you. Thank you. Personnel committee, please be done.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of personnel may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the expected actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion to accept letters A through P and A1 and D3 on the agenda.
Second. I have an exception. We're gonna make a change to the last two on K1. Miss Fine and Leon. Those items are getting tabled. So the motion is going to be items A through K1. Fifteen and L through P. And I have a second?
Six.
Everybody understand that? Okay. So we're tabling K1, the last two, Miss Fine and Leon. Those two items are requesting that be taken. K. K1, the last two. Okay? Okay.
Can I, Roque?
Roque, Mr. Abate.
For.
Mr. Engenavos.
For.
Mr. Dela Quillo.
For.
Mr. Ferrendino.
For.
Ms. Kee.
For.
Dr. Scardino.
For.
Ms. Stella.
For.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Non-agenda items, Mr. Prue.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me a moment to wrap you up. For those of you who have not known, my name is Sean Prue. I'm the president of the Lindhurst Education Association. I would like to invite you to join all of our members and Lindhurst families in some of our upcoming events. The Lindhurst Education Association has applied for and received grants to the New Jersey Education Association's Fast and Pride programs thanks to the chairperson of Melissa Uleth. Through families and schools together for children, Wordfast, we look to encourage families to be more involved in their children's education, to enhance their academic process, and to feel welcome in our public schools. Fast is a coalition of education advocates, community groups, and schools working together to foster family involvement. Some of the events we are looking to provide and hoping that you will support are Special Three Show Experience of Middle School Play, where we'll provide the viewers with lunch bags and life refreshments. An opportunity to help other children by donating non-vegetable foods and items to put into our boxes of kindness, which we will be packing with staff, students, and their families. As well as in the spring, we will be sponsoring the game day and mental health wellness fair. We look forward to working with all of you into making these events a success and hope to see some of your people at events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. I just wanna, I see Ms. Bealike here in the audience. I just wanna thank you for taking on that project. And please reach out to me. I'd love to support that in any way that I can. So just reach out, come by and see you, and we can talk about ways that the district can get involved. And obviously, our parents in the community is right. It is the heartbeat of what we're doing. So just let me know, and I'd love to help out in any way that I can.
Ms. Corinne.
Um, bear with me. I intend to speak on a partial agenda item, non-agenda, uh, non-agenda item. The resignation of a third-grade teacher mid-year and overcrowding for the class of 2031. I am beside myself over this situation. I do not expect the board to view every occurrence in every school building that shows not reasonable expectation. But I feel you need to know some information, and I'd like to know how we are going to rectify this issue. Please note that anything I am about to say has been said directly to me, but has been researched. These are not my opinions or statements that I invite clarification. And if I do not have confirmation on subject, I will note that as I speak. So first thing is the hiring process. You're not gonna be wrong. On paper, the teacher checked all the boxes. But I do not understand how a first-year teacher with zero public school experience and completed student teaching via school, as I was told, was the right choice for third graders who not only are entering a new school building but are coming out of a pandemic. Several parents, some careers in education, were able to see after back-to-school night, she would have been a perfect fit for K through first grade. These third graders needed someone more seasoned to handle the emotional regression that had been evident since the first week of school. In her defense, she never received her basic Lindhurst new hire orientation that would be canceled because of hurricane item flooding in town, as I was told. Basically, this new hire was given to shape the foundation to start her career on, which is not fair to her or the kids. A first-year teacher with no in-person experience was given 28 third-grade students coming out of a pandemic. This is another problem. All of the third-grade classes are overcrowded. The class of 2031 is an extremely poor effect. They are hurricane Sandy made. As of my last conversation with DeCorso in regards to the letter I wrote all of you on 10/15/21, there are 198 third-grade students. This is not a clue to the wave of students who left the district and entered private school due to pandemic protocol uncertainty. There are currently seven third-grade teachers for 198 students. That averages 28.2 students per classroom, per teacher. How is this many kids, 18-year-olds, in one room not only coming out of a pandemic with COVID protocols technically still in place, but in general conducive to a proper learning environment? Not only is a member of students setting up a first-year teacher for failure, it is going to burn her seasoned teachers who are already trying to fill the gaps of learned book and emotional regression. I have to standard the teacher shortage nationwide, but reducing class sizes is a must if you hope to reduce turnover every future step. If the class of 2031 continues to stay this size, we have a minimum of nine teachers for the grade level, possibly 10 for when the private school students return, which is a likely scenario. So you may wanna check the records on how many kids left with the expectation they won't return sooner than later. 198 students with nine teachers would reduce class size to 22 students. I am completely aware this will result in scheduling changes needing to be made and more special teachers to be added. These are things that need to happen and seem to be no problem to plan for the other grade levels, i.e. K through two, except the class of 2031. Please note, this is also the same class that the Board of Ed changed the minimum number of students to get a perm aid in kindergarten to 25. They have been overloaded since day one of their public school education. Problem number three. Information and rumor control for my child's class and teacher have been out of control from the beginning of the school year. This class has been labeled "the bad" class and told that they are the worst students in the building while their new teacher is trying to figure out techniques to manage in-person students for the first time. They are eight and nine. I'm not just saying this because my daughter is in this class. I know a majority of the kids, and there is no "that kid were kids." You can point at and say, "They are the trouble." Trust me, we've had those kids in other grades. This class and teacher have been a topic of discussion for parents in other classes. I have people telling me things about my kid's class, information I am not receiving directly from an administrator, and am having my third grader confirm the validity of comments and situations. In regards to the teacher resigning, I heard a rumor on Friday, November 19, with another mother being told on 11/22 it was indeed happening, and that parents would be getting a personal phone call from the principal. I only received that phone call after I emailed the principal on 11/24, before the holiday, because I cannot cancel any more hearsay. Also, on 11/19, a child in another class came home and told their mother, "My friend, we are getting a new student from that class, my daughter's class, because he isn't learning anything in there." This was confirmed on Monday, when the child's belongings were removed from one classroom to the new classroom by the principal. So not only am I the proud parent of a bad kid, but now we can add dumb too, because that's what's being relayed and demonstrated to other students publicly. The point I am trying to make here is that a better job needs to be done to communicate problems and issues with parents. Four. This leads me to my next issue. I have not been shy over my feelings to the principal or the superintendent this year. Yet I followed the rules and was riding the wave of the new teacher hiccups that were arising because I had faith that what was wrong was being fixed, as I was told, and to be patient. A teacher resigned in the third month of school without fixing anything. What this has done has created an even larger problem. According to the National Education Association study, a mid-year loss of a teacher can create at minimum a 32- to 72-day learning loss for students depending who gets placed there and how they're equipped of where this student is at. I now know that each student is being evaluated by staff on a one-on-one basis. First, English reading, and then math. But if one child was granted a transfer to another class for a learning loss, I have no confirmation on reason, this child was granted a transfer aside from the rumor mill, what are we going to do if there is additional learning loss on top of the pandemic learning loss? Who are we putting with these kids? Is there a plan that's not a rotation of subs for splitting them among the already overloaded classes for this grade? I am asking this here now because what I was told on Wednesday is now different than what another parent was told today. I noticed on the agenda, the XL After-School Program Funded by CARE Act is beginning at Memorial next week. What grade levels is this for? If it's only for K through two, when can we expect to allow such programs for 3 through 5? I know that you brought that up. At this point, my child and 26 other kids are being failed. A new educator is being failed. Six existing third-grade teachers are being failed, and 171 other students are being failed because the administration is acting like it's business as normal. I am tired. I am tired of talking to all of you, and I am tired of this fight to get what's right done. I am not related to anyone in this town, so tell me how I get what my kid needs, and then how I get the same treatment for the entire class of 2031. I have been coming to these meetings since my kid entered pre-K and $5 million spent missing. I am tired of talking about this. I am tired of this class is going to be the forgotten class, because we keep reducing and doing things for kids that aren't even here yet. The K through two, the pre-K program, things we don't need. Because it's not a safe requirement, but my kid's in third grade and doesn't know what a verb is. This is where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Corrin. I'm sorry that we feel that way, and I know that we've had several conversations this year. I can certainly address some of the things that you brought up, but certainly there was a lot of things that you did bring up that I'm gonna have to look into and get back to on. But I know we've had several conversations about the third-grade class and, you know, their size. You know, as a district, you know, this year, we did open, you know, K through two, which I know you did point out, and that was a focus and a priority. I understand that third grade is overcrowding, and is overcrowded with, you know, 28. However, you know, it's mid-year, and I did speak to you, to the budgetary process that we're going through right now, which they mentioned in work sessions. So, you know, as we look to the budget, we look to add staffing, you know, that's obviously something we're gonna look at and consider. You know, you mentioned the new teacher orientation, that is something that was canceled due to the storm. It was rescheduled, and we did do that, you know, after school. You know, I can't speak to some of the rumors and some of the things that you're saying, because, you know, I'm not privy, you know, to that information. But, you know, you pointed to, you know, something on the personnel side of the Agenda tonight, which is, you know, personnel, obviously, you know, we can't speak to it in public, but, you know, with any resignation, there is, you know, a plan that would be put in place to ensure that the students' continuity of instruction is not interrupted. So, you know, whereas tonight, I'm not able to even say what that plan is, there is a plan that I've been working on with the building principal to ensure that, you know, that class is covered for the rest of the year.
Do you hear your words do that? I know a certain parent right now who was in that class. He can wait to be filled in on a regular basis. Now that our kids, compared to everybody else in the third grade, who received consistent education, our kids obviously have a deck, which is known by the principal as far as when we see it when we come home, that they have not been doing what they were supposed to be doing. So when are we going to actually be grouped in?
So as soon as this plan is finalized, I assure you, you have my word, that I will, you know, reach out to the building principal to ensure that whatever plan is put forward will be communicated to that entire class.
Hi, good evening, I'm Michelle. So I have a few little questions that have been addressed. I'm not able to carry much, Tracy. But I still am a parent of a third grader at Roosevelt, and the overcrowding issue has been my main concern since the beginning of the year, that's powered by the student resignation. So, Mr. DeCorso, you did just say that you can't really discuss the plan. Okay. I also understand that the students are being in that class, are currently being evaluated in reading and then in math. And my thing is this, like, even if they're at level, like, they could have just been so much further beyond, you know? And the overcrowding is a big concern for me. And we had a conversation at the beginning of the year, if it could be possible to even hire an additional teacher to the current level that we have, to redo class size, and now here we are in this situation, okay? Moving forward, I really hope this is a priority for next year, as fourth graders and as fifth graders of the year after at Roosevelt, either by hiring a new teacher or by shuffling within the district, not new teacher, but additional teachers, to really address this overcrowding at Roosevelt, because it's more serious at Roosevelt than it is at Jefferson, from what I understand, okay? I've also been told that, you know, so this is a bubble, like, this grade has a bubble, and it's gonna carry through, but it's very different at this grade level of 3 through five than it would be at the middle school, or high school, because they have choice in classes. They're not necessarily stuck in the same classroom with the same 27 students that could be disrupted, or not disrupted, with the same teacher, whatever the personality conflicts may be, okay? So I really am asking that this be a priority and that this be looked into. Mr. Eager, you said you're starting the budget for next year. I'm just be something that you would consider, okay? All right, what's next? Okay, I was going to ask about the adepts at Roosevelt, but my understanding is the classrooms aren't occupied yet, but they will be soon. I guess we've already issued already, because I think there's still four empty classrooms in Roosevelt.
Yeah, but, you know, basically what happened, you know, the refund was very successful, but unfortunately, the classrooms were turned over right at the start of the school year, a couple days into the school year. So, you know, teachers had already come in over the summer to set up their classrooms, so we couldn't just pull the plug and have them ship everything into the new room. So, you know, we're trying to infuse them little by little, so that the teachers weren't completely up for it. They spend a lot of time in the summer for tents for the first day of school, and then getting those classrooms after that date, you know, they would have had to completely do their question.
I also just wanted to add to certain grade classes, I just remembered something. This is the same class where there was a glitch over the summer in releasing schedules, and then there was like one name listed, and then you got a different teacher, and then we have, you know, a resignation code. It could have been just something that, I don't know if she was like the last one to hire or left, but it's just about also the hiring offices that, you know, are in place. So, what else? Okay. I also made a little note about the Agenda. I will confirm that I think Michelle Miller and Tracy were saying before that in the archive section, there were no agendas posted after July 20. Because I myself looked, because I was trying to figure it out, and now I want to go on a scavenger hunt, so as of yesterday, it definitely was not updated.
I know, I'm a little confused by that, because I'm on the website now with Mr. Angelopoulos, and when I go to Board of Education and I go to meeting agendas, I see them. So it might be a glitch with, I know Mrs. Corrin said she's using it on the phone, so I could reach out to our website provider and see if there's a glitch with the phone, but in terms of our website, I'm seeing the agenda, so.
Is it a grid?
Say it again.
Is it on the table, like a grid?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's since 2021, and it has all of our meetings. So I'm not sure. The only thing I can think of, the only thing I can think of, it's something with the cell phone, but I will certainly reach out. On a side note, we are, I think we mentioned either at the last meeting or the meeting prior, that we're in the process of getting a completely new website. So we've contracted with that vendor, and that is gonna hopefully come live in April. So we recognize that, you know, this isn't the cleanest website, and we wanna get better, so, you know, we do plan to have advancements there, but like, again, I do see them, so I'm not really sure.
Okay. I did not check on the cell phone. I ran two different computers, and that was the case, so, but thank you. Okay, what else do I have? I just need, this is actually a topic that may have been brought up in the past, I have been at the board meetings lately, but I actually wanna ask each board number and Mr. Superintendent as well, like, what are your personal opinions about hoodies and students wearing hoodies?
Well, I'm gonna answer this, because we're addressing the policy.
Okay.
Yes, we have said that, you know, we recognize that there's inconsistencies with our dressing rooming policy. So, you know, we have publicly said that we are gonna revisit that policy, we're gonna possibly do some surveys and see, and I think K-12, we're gonna have a revised policy for next year. And in the current policy, there is provisions for administration to make decisions within that. So, you know, student safety, obviously, is at the first, you know, and foremost of all of our, you know, decisions, so.
Can you simplify, like, what do you mean, like, what? Student safety in terms of what?
So, I mean, you referenced the hoodies in general, so, you know, I'm not gonna say, you know, what is safe and what is not safe, but, you know, we do allow our administrators to make decisions for their building, and, you know, we do consult with, you know, our police department as well. And, you know, I think the concern this year particularly is with, you know, masks and hoodies, in addition, you know, those together do and can, you know, have a safety concern when entering a building. So, whereas, I'm not saying that, I think, you know, the policy can be revised and explored, and as a board collectively, we have decided that we are gonna do that. So we're gonna revise the policy, and we'll have that, you know, for next week.
Okay, I was asking for your own opinions on this, but, you know, that's really what I was hoping for. But the other thing is this. In bringing this to light, right, and asking about hoodies, I don't know what the revisions are going to be, but I also just wanna know why, you know, one school or one decision, then how will that impact the other school districts? Okay? Because then, if the decision's gonna be that they're just absolutely not allowed, I mean, that that one decision is affecting the entire district, right?
So I know you're asking for my personal opinion, but I will say this. You have my word that whatever policy that is rolled out will be consistent in K-12. You know, I see your point that right now, something that's happening in one building might not be happening in others. And again, you know, we recognize that inconsistency, and that's why, that's why we're gonna explore the policy, and anything that we roll out will be consistent for all of our building.
All right, and, you know, just from a practicality, I think they're practical, they're good for wear and tear for the school, washable, affordable, and all of that. So I just really want that, you know, to be aware. And as far as the face masks are concerned, I do believe this was announced prior to face masks being used, so I don't think one might have to do, I don't think one necessarily has to do with the other. But, okay, so, do I just wanna move on? And no one's willing to give their opinion on this? Um, I think that's it for now. I'll save this next one for another time. Okay, thank you.
Tracy? Thanks for wearing a mask, I don't appreciate the mask. But thanks for wearing a mask.
I just don't understand how you deny a medical exemption from a doctor.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Montalto. I'm a lead house resident with two children in the school. I have a few questions tonight, as well as concerns for the board. I'd like to start off with a question for Mr. DeCorso. After numerous attempts through email to acquire the name and contact of the district's school doctor, you have still not provided me this information. So I will request it now again. May I have the name of the school doctor, please?
I don't recall you specifically asking for the name of our district physician, but I can't.
Fine, yes. Fine.
So I will provide it to you.
So what is it?
I don't think it's appropriate to give it to public. It's Dr. McInerney.
McInerney? Second, I have a question for the board. I'd like to ask, I'm gonna give you a definition, and I want somebody to give me the word of the definition. I'll ask Mrs. Stella to refrain from answering. Okay, so this is the definition. Everybody ready? I'll give you a little hint, it's a noun. Moral principles that govern a person's behavior or the conducting of an activity. Any takers on what the definition is, what the word is? I assumed nobody up here would know. It's ethics. The definition is ethics. With that being said, I will provide you all a copy of Code of Ethics you have all agreed to as board members.
We just did an ethics training at six o'clock today, so we're well aware of the ethics.
I'm sorry?
We just did an ethics training at six o'clock tonight, so we're well aware of the ethics.
So how come nobody can tell me the definition of ethics then? So I'll finish, I'll finish.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm gonna provide a copy of Code of Ethics.
We haven't, no need to provide.
I'm still gonna provide a copy, because I have highlighted something if you would let me finish my sentence. Thank you, Kristen. I will provide you a copy of the Code of Ethics you have all agreed to as board members. Please note, C, D, H, and J are highlighted. Those are the start of the ethics complaints that will be filed against you for breaking them. This is your word.
Can you repeat that again? Violated what?
Your Code of Ethics. Yeah, they're highlighted. That was the whole point in me giving you the copies. They're highlighted.
And how were they violated?
I'm sorry?
How were they violated?
How were they violated? You really want me to go through this right now?
I thought you said something.
I honestly don't think we have enough time to go through all of the violations.
I'd like you to finish.
Lastly, I would also like to touch on the hoodies, because I have emailed, spoken to, I mean, it's like beating a dead horse at this point. While Mr. Recco was still superintendent, he was in the middle of removing the ban on hoodies. I don't know if anybody's aware of that, but multiple parents were dealing with the situation with Mr. Recco personally. He was starting to remove the ban on hoodies. For anybody who's not aware, the ban on hoodies is only in the middle school and is new to the entire district. The reasons I was given for the ban on hoodies is because children can be pulled by them, so it's a danger, it's a safety issue, right? Mr. DeCorso, you told me there's a safety team in the middle school that deemed this dangerous. Okay, if I have to over it, I will, but I would like the information of who the safety team is and what exactly they deem so dangerous. Again, my daughter has a ponytail she can be pulled by. These kids are wearing masks that they can be pulled by the, whatever you want to call them, okay? They can be pulled by the collar on their shirt that they're forced to wear. The buttons would choke them, because they would never break away. The hoodies have been Board of Education-approved spirit-wear for the nine years I have been in district. Why should anyone be forced to spend more money for just three years to please a new employee? Again, the kids could be pulled by the collar on their shirts, their hair, and even the straps of their masks. For example, my son's friend was pulled by his sweatshirt that did not have a hood. He was choked, knocked down the stairs, and his sweatshirt ripped literally in half. Okay, he was injured. No hood involved, hopeless sweatshirt. So the safety theory, I'm sorry, but it's BS, okay? All the money I spent, I'd like to just share with you. These are one, just one of my children's, maybe like a quarter of the stock of her hood, okay? My kid doesn't like sweatshirts without a hood. No idea why. I'm not gonna argue. Go to school, learn, get educated. We're more worried about kids being tardied, okay, and stupid excuses that somebody just randomly made up, and not worried about these kids' education. My kids are harassed about their hoods. Some of the teachers pretend like they don't say it, because they don't wanna deal with it either. That's how bad it is. Okay, so with that being said, I will not spend another dime on schoolware, when no one is even in uniform anyway. And maybe instead of punishing kids with detention for one tardy, we should properly discipline the kids who are in need of it. Yeah, so it comes down to you, Mr. DeCorso, because this is your job to allow or not allow a principal to make a decision. You're telling me she has a safety committee that deemed this unsafe, yet it's not unsafe in any other school, there's not an issue. There's not an issue. Not even in the high school where you think it would probably be an issue because they're older and they mess around. Instead of taking things away from these kids that they're used to when we've just come out of two years of the, well, we're still in COVID nightmare here, give them the comforts that they're used to. Why strict them on these silly, silly things? Okay? Discipline the kids who pull people by their hood. It's ridiculous. Discipline them. No? Isn't that the simple solution? Lastly, I would like to address the parking in the parking lot. There was a concern that kids were gonna get run over because people were coming in and parking and waiting before school was let out. And for some strange reason, the solution to that was to shuffle kids out to the, I don't even know what you call it, emergency exit? To Ridge Road? Is that accurate, emergency exit?
Yes, we opened the back entrance of the school to ease the traffic in front of the building.
Wouldn't the simple solution be to tell parents to walk in?
So, the reason for opening the back gate wasn't necessarily because of the traffic coming in. It was just the volume of students going out in that direction and going out towards Ridge Road. There was, again, just a large volume of students. So, in working with the traffic provision and the Leonard's Police Department, we work extremely well with, who's very supportive of us, we decided to open that back gate. And in talking with the traffic bureau, it seems that that really has alleviated a lot of the stress in front of the building. And we've committed with the town to explore other options to have egresses on the backside of the building. So, you know, we recognize, obviously, you know, the location of the middle school or any school, you know, is worried someone's traffic and we're doing everything we can to try to address that.
Right, but what we're doing is not helping. Even in the morning, the drop-off, you cut off people from being able to come down to drop their kids off, go around the circle, and come back out. All those people sit in the right lane and block anybody from being able to drop a sixth grader, eighth grader off. Like, I live three minutes from school, and it takes me 15 minutes to drop my kids off at the front door. It's ridiculous. Open that up, let them go down. I feel like it's common sense, but apparently it's really sparse around here. So, I have one kid being forced out, told she absolutely cannot leave this way, and then the other one's allowed to leave that way. So, I'm sitting, and she's forced to walk all the way up her way for no good reason because she's still gonna get run over there. It's pointless. There's no thought process put into it. The drop-off's ridiculous. The doors don't open till eight o'clock on the dot. Again, I addressed this. There's nobody outside with these kids before the doors open at 8:00 AM. So, again, going back to hoodies, if you wanna claim safety is a concern, I'm just not buying it. So, thank you.
Yes?
Hi, my name is Nancy. If you've, um, sponsored a study, I can help you out. I just wanted to, uh,
Come, come down to the podium. Come on down, tell us your name.
Delanta.
What's your name?
I'm a parent as well, a assistant, plus, again, I didn't plan to speak. I just heard a couple of things that jumped out at me. One of them being the fact that the overcrowding in Roosevelt was attributed to not being able to move the teachers to the units because they had set up their classrooms exactly. I cannot, I mean,
No, 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 I guess the question was why? Why are we not using those classrooms? So, certainly overcrowding is not a reflection of that space. In fact, in this case, extra classrooms could potentially help. But, you know, it's about staffing. It's about, you know, again, I've said that the focus for this year was indicated to buildings with class size. I recognize that the third grade does have a large class size. Unfortunately, in this district, we've had large class sizes in the past. We've had 27, 28, 29 students. Is, is low as kindergarten all the way through the grade levels. That is a concern of mine in the entire board. We've taken steps to address that, but unfortunately, we can't, you know, address everything all at once. So, certainly, we recognize that 28 is large, and, you know, we have to take steps to address that. But it has nothing to do with teachers moving. I was just saying, that's why someone made the point that there's four classrooms that are empty. That is the reason why we didn't occupy some of those rooms initially because we took ownership of them after school started and teachers had already set up their classrooms. That has nothing to do with putting someone into those and adding a teacher.
Okay, so, so I just wanna clarify, so that's not an option? It's still not?
No. No, certainly, what, adding a teacher or using that speaker?
Well, actually, no, it's just, again, I had no intention of, I'm not comparing things, but a lot of stuff that was set up just doesn't sit well with me. Again, I have a student who actually redressed to the point that I had to, I chose to have him tested. He went backwards in the pandemic. He continued to, because he has zero attention in class. He's that kid that used to be a cloud. And if he's not a wall cloud, he's middle-aged or chatterbox. Been asked to sign strikeout rules. Maybe that at home, that doesn't happen in school. I'm prior service. I'm all about following the rules. But I'll address that. My child is not gonna be told when to do things that are not, they're not education-type things. They're, they're not, if it's the eighth-year-old in class, absolutely. I'm not a not-my-child mom. But other things are out of control. And I don't even know, and Tracy did an amazing job leading this together, but I can't remember, I'm on the ground how we have a group of individuals that are just watching these kids fail. It's an epic show. I don't think, I don't even think I can express it. I wanna be a fly in the world just to see some of the stuff he comes home and says to me. Again, what's a verb? Subtraction, simple things that he was doing in first grade. He's in third grade, and he's looking at it like I'm asking him how to do calculus. It doesn't make sense. So, I just wanna sort of back up everybody who said something. It's, it's our responsibility. The book can't continue to go on. You have to stop it somewhere. And I understand that everybody's doing the absolute best they can. But his parents and working parents that have children that are coming home crying are going to the nurse because they have headaches from the volume in the classroom. Like you said, my kid specifically has come home in the nurse's office. He says he has a headache, and I'll say, what the hell? It was so loud home that I couldn't hear myself. And you're testing him out of my, my child was tested in a classroom with another student. The other student knew my son was crazy. Does that make any sense? And you're supposed to be done, and they're children. And the journalist was supposed to be privy to the child. Now, my child and the other child happen to know each other. What if there was some sort of manosity? And they didn't walk in there, chumming, and walked out, you know, bloody, bloody, hey, we got to get out of the classroom. What if there was two children in there that, that didn't match up? And the one felt intimidated, or held up a pack of the brave in the house in front of the other child? It, it just, none of it is adding up to me. Again, not an attack. I just, I'm seeing some inconsistencies that just, my mind can't, I can't put it together. And I just wanna sort of put that out there. And it's not just one or two parents. I don't know how they're not, it's only six. It's just, I don't think, I don't think even Tracy, who, who has been working on everything she said for weeks, if not months, has compiled everything that we've seen since the beginning of September. And if I knew in hindsight, my son, I live on the same street as Roosevelt, who's registered in Jefferson, and I didn't even live together. I looked at the paperwork, and I went, wait a minute, and I had to make a phone call. Then I had to prove my residency, only to loan the whole child at school the first day and their students found that I know, don't live in the area. And they're at my school. Now, granted, that's not a personal thing. It's a fact, but it changes the numbers. Whether it's five, 10, you don't have to be an mathematician to understand all those numbers that add up in your building class size. It's all gonna come back. It's not like it's gonna change and a hundred of us are just gonna move next year. But I don't hope it not, anyway. That was it. I just wanted to express myself, and hopefully it would come off as an attack, not intended to be, just again, a concerned parent. It's losing traction. I'm moving this way with my child.
No, thank you for your concern. I assure you that they're leaving. A communication that goes out to that class to see what the next class does.
I also, I understand that you've made justification for class size for years ago for 27, 28, 29 deep. These are kids coming out of a pandemic. And we keep making justification like this. It's not business as normal. It needs to stop. Third graders are being like first graders. Kindergarters, they were home, they got settled. It's not required by the state of New Jersey to have kindergarters. But yet, the former campus has two of them with 12, isn't it? My kid lives in a classroom 26 for kindergarten. How is that fair? It's still, the renewed, the K-3, too. I don't understand the content and everything they're striving for. But we've got third graders who don't understand what they're reading. We have third graders hiding under desks because they got yelled at. We have third graders that are less important because they were brought to a first grade level. Third graders. 28 to 29 deep in a classroom. It is not okay.
We hear you.
And, I'm, okay, that's a problem. And then the issue is that it's like, there's so many teachers and all of these messages that these students are getting, constantly getting mutated by the other, you know, adults in the room.
Yes. Other results being brought in to help manage a problem that has grown a lot, 38 to 9. It's shit show. It is a shit show. And it's not getting better. I know it, I'm sorry that you have to deal with me out of all character after four years, but I know you all know my name. See my face, see my email. I am exhausted, and this is third grade. I don't wanna come in here in sixth grade and continue to have a hoodie conversation with you. Uh, just fix this. This is basic. This is what I, this is education. Do you have the little things, whatever you want? My kid can't comprehend this reading. We are at a point, and they have to, they're reading, they have to learn to read to learn. Period. They're reading, and they're not learning anything. Whatever this saying is, I'm so frustrated and angry. You have to learn to read to read to learn, and they're not there. They're not even close to there. And my kid, as all the kids, got so lucky to be put in this class where we had, and I got lost on the clock. I, I just, like, I'm gonna rock and cry everywhere at this point. I am broken. Five years I passed our system. I prepaid this factory. Love to go back to that year before money was missing, before you took away permanent aid in kindergarten, and you had to have 25 or more. Like, this is, it's just, it's absolutely, kindergarten was a disaster. You had a kid in kindergarten, a kid paid my student kindergarten. I'm talking shit show, shit show, shit show that's thrown a pandemic. Sorry.
All right, we're gonna be going into executive session to discuss personnel negotiations and legal updates. We're not gonna be coming out, so you don't have to wait for us. There'll be no action taken either.
Someone here has a comment.
Sorry, just a final frustration comment about what's going on in the third grade classroom. I'm a teacher myself, and, like you said, working parents are dealing with their kids coming home, not learning, complaining about behavior issues. Okay, we've established the fact that it's been a disaster. Teacher resigned. Now, we need to know who is getting hired. We can't have a teacher without experience get hired for this classroom because that will be another fail. This teacher that comes in has to have experience. If they don't, the same disaster will occur. Zero management. It's the honest truth. A teacher's first year, those kids are exactly giving things. We can't have another new teacher be put into this classroom. I don't wanna hear that this new teacher has a business background. I don't wanna hear that this new teacher is working in an office in I don't know what board of education. It has to be a teacher that knows how to teach. A teacher that's going to do serious damage control because that's exactly what they're going to deal with. Serious damage control. So, we need to know who is going to be hired. Obviously, we're not part of this hiring process, but to be honest with you, working in New York City, parents are part of the hiring process. And we need to know that this teacher is going to be a good fit for this, these kids. It can't just be anybody. It can't be anybody because it's going to continue to be a fail in this room. And our kids are so behind. Teacher says it, principal says it. The kids themselves are exactly aware of how behind they are. And it really, it's, it's sadening. We are hurt. We are beyond devastated to be experiencing this. And I just want to make sure that whoever is hired is someone that knows what they are doing. Because it cannot be a new teacher. It cannot be somebody who's been sitting in an office. And that's gonna be a hard line. It will definitely be a hard line. So, my other, my other answer is, can somebody in that building who is already a seasoned teacher be shifted into that classroom? Is that a possibility, maybe? Where it's somebody who does have experience as opposed to a random who knows who coming from who knows where? Because at this point, it's gonna be a hard job. But what do you need is someone who knows what they are doing with these kids?
Or re-allocation of one of your memorial candidates who has experience and merge the smaller classes together so that these kids get a senior teacher.
I can say that there will be a plan that will be rolled out, that will be communicated to all of you. And you can reach out to me, you know, if you do not like the plan that was rolled out, and you can go from there. But obviously, you know, there, you know, as people have pointed out, there's, there's gonna be a vacancy there, and we're gonna do our best to fill it. And we're gonna do our best to make sure it's a smooth transition. When that happens, the plan will be communicated, and we can go from there. Okay? I don't wanna keep going back and forth because we're talking about the same thing, so.
We need to have a one-on-one communication. That's the problem. You need all those parents together, everyone? Because we are getting driven through it, and nothing is safe. We're comparing notes. We're comparing notes. Nobody's understanding. We just need someone, an adult in the room, to give us the information at the same time. We weren't allowed to ask any questions about this whole night. She wasn't allowed to say a question. I get that in teacher, or in parent, but we're all asking questions individually and then comparing notes outside of school. Like, we want one meeting with everybody giving the same information. Just because you only see six of us, I think there's 10 more parents I know that would come here to have this exactly in conversation. It just retired the driven draft. If this is the problem, we now all know the problem. Can we have one meeting or one rollout or one email with actual, succinct, factual information?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Once the plan is developed, it'll be communicated to the entire class.
But you definitely want to email me back? No, no.
One communication will be distributed to the entire class at the same time with all the information I know. I can assure you of that.
And if there are problems with what's rolled out, can we have a Zoom meeting? We can use Zoom for this. Okay, that'll work, yeah. What was that conversation made of? Hey, can I, can I get a book? Sure, don't miss.
All right, we're gonna,
And in that case, we'll go back to the schools, too. So, we will see you back in there. Do you have, like, on the game, are we more interested in the classroom?
I would email that question. All right, so we'll go into executive session. Again, no need to wait for us. We're not coming back down. There'll be no action taken. If I don't see anybody, our next meeting is December 21st, 6:00 PM, so before Christmas. But if I don't see you, I'll be merry Christmas.